We're going to call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Burgess.
Here.
Ma'ams. Ma'ams.
There we go. I'm here.
Salee.
Yeah.
Taylor. Taylor.
You're muted.
There, there.
Thomas.
Here.
Weiner.
Here.
And I am also here. So yes, all right.
I apologize.
Well, welcome to the Iowa City formal meeting. Tonight is May 19th, 2020, and it's just after 7:00 PM. And we are so happy for those of you that are joining from the public. You may be in the waiting room or are able to hear us right now. And so happy that you're with us. And then those that are viewing various other social media ways, happy that you're here and a part of tonight's meeting. All right, so I'm going to first kind of give some information about Zoom here because I know that it can be a little challenging for some people. And so one of the things that I'm going to ask is that we keep our mics off when we're not speaking and it just help with transmitting while people are talking. And then for the public or anyone that's attending that is not a part of the panelist in a way, we're going to ask that you, if you would like to speak, there is a raising of the hand. And you can there's a little icon you'll be able to press. And then I'll be able to see that you would like to speak. And if you're on the phone and you're a caller, star nine is how you'll be able to raise your hand. So I just wanted to give that up as a thought before we go on with our agenda. So thanks for making the adjustment here with council. Really appreciate it. Moving on to item number two. And it is a proclamation. And I am sorry about that, adjusting one little screen. All right. So item 2A is National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Whereas every day more than 100 Americans are killed by gun violence. And on average, there are more than 13,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas Iowa has 270 gun deaths every year with a rate of 8.4 deaths per 100,000 people. 214 of those gun deaths are firearm suicides. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people who shouldn't have them. Whereas the pandemic facing America has drastically impacted communities and individual sheltering in place, which may result in situations where access to firearms results in increased risk in intimate partner violence gun in intimate partner violence, gun deaths, suicide by gun and unintentional shootings. And whereas in January 2013, Hidayah Pennington, a teenager who marched in the presidential inauguration parade and was tragically shot and killed just weeks later, should now be celebrating her 23rd birthday. And whereas to help honor Hidayah and the more than 100 Americans whose lives are cut short every day, the countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations has designated June 5th, 2020, the first Friday in June, as the sixth National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hidayah's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, they chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods. And orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. Whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 5th, the first Friday in June in 2020, to raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. And therefore, I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the first Friday in June, June 5th, 2020, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day and encourage all citizens to support their community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. To receive this today is Timothee Hyatt, co-local leader of Moms Demand Action for Gunsense in Johnson County.
Thank you, Mayor Teague. And thank you to the city council members for joining the movement to honor the lives of Americans stolen by gun violence, to help keep firearms out of the hands of people who shouldn't have them and to protect our communities from gun violence. I accept the proclamation on behalf of the Iowa City volunteers with Moms Demand Action for Gunsense in America.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes. Moving on to item numbers three through eight, which is our consent calendar. Did I get a motion to approve consent calendar as amended and amending public hearing date for item 7A to June 2nd, 2020?
Second, Weiner.
Moved by Salee, seconded by Weiner. And public discussion. We do have item 8C that I'm not sure if anyone is present to, that would like to address that. I also wanted to make a mention that during our council meeting, that item 7A, the rezoning of 1335 Highway 1 West. During our work session, we did change the date of when our next meeting will happen. Instead of being June 9th, it will be June 2nd. And so we already made the motion to amend that public hearing. So at this time, would anyone from the public like to address any item on our, item 8C on our consent agenda? Hearing non-council discussion. Hearing non-roll call, please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Ma'ams.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas. Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
All right, motion passes seven to zero. At this time, we're going to move on to item number nine, which is community comment time. And so if you are present and you would like to speak on any topic that is not on our formal agenda, I'm going to ask that you please raise your hand and I'll be able to see that. And I will call you one by one to address any topic. And if you are a caller on the phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Seeing no one, I am going to move on to item number 10. Planning and zoning matters. Today, rezoning Eastbrook Street and American Legion Road. Ordinance conditionally rezoning land near the intersection of Eastbrook Street and American Legion Road from interim development, single family to neighborhood public for approximately 2.14 acres. Below-density multifamily residential for approximately 10.64 acres. And to low-density, single-family residential for approximately 22.51 acres. Second consideration. Did I get a motion to give second consideration?
Move, Salee.
Second, Thomas.
Moved by Salee, seconded by Thomas. Is there any council discussion?
Did we lose the mayor?
Somebody's coming back up.
Bruce, are you there?
I'll check his status. I think he's trying to get reconnected.
I guess Weiner is coming back. I guess roll call.
Ma'ams.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Okay, item number 11. Amendment FY 2020 operating budget. Resolution amendments the current budget for the fiscal years ending June 2020. And come on this resolutions amended for fiscal year 2020. I guess we opened the public hearing.
Mayor Protem, Salee, Jaclyn Fliegel from our finance department is here and she'll have a short presentation for city council tonight.
Okay, stop presentation.
Hi, everyone. It's Jaclyn Fliegel. Get my presentation here pulled up. Budget compliance officer. Finance. A short presentation just on this budget amendment. And this is the third and final budget amendment for the fiscal year 2020. Starting with revenues, some of the larger amendments made were to other city taxes for approximately 293,000. This is for adjustments to hotel motel tax to bring it closer to actuals. Another being to intergovernmental for 483,000. Majority of this is related to expected COVID-19 grants that we are expecting to receive. And the largest revenue amendment totaled to about $5.4 million. And this is largely related to the debt service transfer for the lease purchase agreement in parking. On the flip side, expenditures within the different programs involve public safety, had amendments for almost 90,000. And this is the flip side of a COVID-19 grant that was received, the expenditures for that. 75,000 in public works. This is for salt expenses due to the winter we had this year. Another larger area was community and economic development program for 757,000. This is two-part related to COVID-19 grant expenditures on CD to BG side. And then also amending for university purchase that was made. Another larger one is the business type expenses for just over $6.9 million. And this is the actual payment for the parking lease purchase agreement. And then we also have the flip side of the transfers in, now the transfers out. And most of that again is related to the other side of the adjustment for the lease purchase agreement. Overall, the total impact to the fund balance is a decrease of over 6.98 million to the fund balance. This is the third and final budget amendment for the fiscal year 2020. Will you take any questions you guys have?
Okay, question for the staff. Okay, public discussion. Is there any hand raised? I can't see anything. If you guys can help me.
There is none.
No, the mayor's back. Okay.
I'll let you finish it out.
Okay, now close the public hearing. And council, I just need a motion to approve.
So move, Thomas.
Second, Weiner.
Moved by Thomas, seconded by Weiner. Any council discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Ma'ams.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burg- Burgess.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Back to the mayor.
Yes, well, thank you, Mayor Protem. I'll just admit that my computer gave me a warning that my battery was low and I thought, oh, I have a little time, but it went out. So sorry about that. All right, moving on to item, thank you for filling in, Mayor Protem. Moving on to item number 12, which is utility rate public hearing resolution. Ordinance amending Title III entitled City Finances Taxation and Fees, Chapter IV entitled Schedule of Fees, Rates, Charges, Bonds, Fines, and Penalties, Section 3-4-5 entitled Solid Waste Disposal. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So move, Thomas.
Second, Taylor.
All right, council discussion. All right, roll call, please.
Salee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Ma'ams.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 13. Resolution approving purchase agreement with Summit Ridge LLC for lot one of the proposed community view subdivision for future use as a fire station. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved, ma'ams.
Seconded by Burgess.
All right, is anyone from staff present to talk about this?
Yeah, Mayor, this is Jeff. I will give a quick introduction and turn it over to Fire Chief John Greer. Earlier today in your work session, we had a brief discussion on your strategic plan, which is a working session. And one of the items in your strategic plan is really to be thinking about long-term needs of the city when it comes to infrastructure and facilities. And this item really dovetails nicely with where that objective is going. This future fire station location is in the same subdivision that you just took a look at from the rezoning standpoint. So I think you're familiar with that based on the past staff presentations. And this would be the location for the future location of our existing station three. And again, Chief Greer will talk about that in terms of the impact on operations. The agreement is for the city to purchase the approximately 1.5 acres for 420,000. That number was arrived at based on an appraisal that was solicited for that parcel. So staff is recommending approval. But before you take your vote, I'd like to turn it over to Fire Chief John Greer, who's just going to talk a little bit about what this means for future operations in our fire department.
Hey, thanks. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We are certainly excited to have this resolution before you tonight. It's one of those things, we're constantly looking at how we can improve our services. And this opportunity will definitely help us do that. Fire Station 3, as you know from our previous discussions, was constructed in 1972. And its design standards are a little different back then. So it doesn't really have the modern facilities that most fire stations have today. There's no dedicated office space. The crew quarters are somewhat cramped. And the modern fire apparatus squeeze in there. It's a challenge. There's little room for error. You also know that from our previous discussions that we have some response time challenges on, in the Central, East, and South districts. The relocation of Fire Station 3 to this lot, coupled with the building of Fire Station 5, building and staffing of Fire Station 5 on South Gilbert Street will definitely increase our abilities to meet our time standards for calls for service in all those districts. If you remember, I discussed kind of like the pinwheel or bicycle wheel spokes of the fire stations coming. This helps us kind of meet all the directions that we can go. So we look forward to these projects moving forward in the future. And as I said, we certainly are excited to have this before you tonight. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
All right, hearing none. Any public discussion on this item? If so, please raise your hand. And if you're on the phone, please press star nine. Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
You're muted, Eleanor. Try that again. Salee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Ma'ams.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. I don't know what's worse, getting kicked off Zoom or not being able to, thinking you're speaking and no one hears you.
That happens to me all the time.
Item number 14, council appointments, 14A Airport. Actually, before we go through this, we have quite a few appointments tonight. We have two, four, five appointments. And so I think what I want to do is maybe go through each appointment and have people suggest who they are, who they thought could be there. There are several applicants for various ones and only a limited amount of space for people to serve. And so I think that's what I'll do. We'll go through 14A and kind of talk about that. That was a little easy because there's only one applicant and one vacancy. So I think maybe people understand what we're going to do. We have new counselors on here. Yes? We'll navigate it together. All right. So Airport Commission, one vacancy to fill, a four-year term, July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2024. And this is item 4A. So who is it on here? Well, there's only one individual, so.
Yes.
So what are thoughts?
I would appoint her, Elektra.
I enjoy seeing that she was a part of the Census 2020 Committee. I was excited to see that. Yeah.
It's the one female that we need and she's female.
Yeah. All right. Sound like there's a consensus and not enough heads for that one. All right, so Community Police Review Board, there's two vacancies and five people applying.
I would recommend reappointing of Orville Townsend. I think Orville fills a critical role on that particular commission. A lot of our police issues were, whereas we don't have a lot here in town, but when we look at it nationally, it has to do with racial issues. And he's involved with Black Voices Project. He's been, I think, a great representative on here. So I would certainly recommend reappointing of Orville to his second term. And then I thought Amanda Nichols was a really good applicant for that second spot.
I agree with Susan on Orville. He's certainly been a dedicated member of this committee and very good member, good attendance, which I always look at that. So I would definitely recommend his reappointment. And I also liked Amanda Nichols.
I do, I do also support Oliver. But for the second one, I really want to point, I can't pronounce the last name, but it is, the last name is O-R-O-Z-Zico, Orzuko.
She's the person we just appointed to the Airport Commission.
We just appointed Airport.
Oh.
She applied for various commissions, but we put her on the Airport Commission because she was the sole applicant.
Because she's the only one, right?
Well, we needed a female. She's female and she expressed.
Okay, yeah, that's true. But because I just was liking somebody from Latino background to be on the the commission of Police Review Board all the time, but that's fine. I also suggest Bruce for the for the unexpired, the unexpired term to continue the unexpired term. And Amanda now.
Yes, I would just throw my support behind Jerry McConnell. I thought that was a good application, someone who had a varied background and was definitely interested in this commission. So I, but I also liked Amanda Nichols and definitely Orville Townsend.
I agree with, yeah, Jerry McConnell. I didn't do the third one because we are looking at one male, one female, one nun. So I would agree with Jerry McConnell also.
I would agree, Jerry, on that unexpired one, too.
Yeah, I support the three, Jerry for the unappointed or unexpired, sorry.
I think it's important that we reappoint Orville to this, to this position. And I would support appointing Amanda Nichols to the other full term and Jerry McConnell to the partial term.
Okay, so if I heard correctly for this one, we're going to appoint Orville Townsend for second term. I heard Jerry McConnell for a unexpired term and Amanda Nichols.
Yes. Yes.
Heard?
Yes.
All right, so our city clerk got that?
Yes, I do.
Perfect. All right. We're going to go to historic preservation. And we have two vacancies and two males for that one.
I would support the reappointment of Kevin Boyd and Austin Wu.
Yes.
And yet large commissions.
I would agree.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree as well.
All right, so it sounds like we have agreement there, so Austin Wu. And then Kevin Boyd to be reappointed. All right. And then we are going to, I should be given the item number. So we're going to go to 14D. And this is the Housing and Community Development Commission. Three vacancies to fill a three-year term, July 1st through 2020 through June 30th, 2020. to fill a three-year term, July 1st through 2020 through June 30th, 2023.
This is Pauline. I think before we consider the appointment, I believe that each of us received an email from V regarding reappointment to HCDC. And we all know that V has been a very committed member of HCDC, even serving as chair. And it's unfortunate that V missed the deadline for the application, although during this time of our upside-down world, I don't sometimes even know what day it is or the date. So that's unfortunate, but I don't know what other council members feel about V's email requests that we might put off one of the appointments or whether that would be fair to, I mean, we do have quite a long list, 10 applicants that did meet the deadline. I didn't know what others thought about that.
I'm not willing to. She's been an excellent member of that commission, and I think she's done a great job as chair, and I think it's really unfortunate. But I'm really concerned about the press.
You froze.
What's up, Susan?
Was she one day delay, one day late on her application? Was that?
It came in the day after.
I think we are living under, you know, very difficult circumstances. I would certainly, and I'm very supportive of the work V has done on the commission, so I would be willing to accept her one-day-late application.
I think if you're going to do that, you probably need to delay the appointments and just move the deadline date back.
I would be willing to do that, then, if it's.
Move all of the appointments down and move the date, or just that one?
Well, I mean, all these people are competing for three different appointments.
Right.
And so all should be given the same opportunity to apply. If you're going to change the deadline date, it seems to me it should be changed for all the appointments that are being made.
I agree that if we're going to change it, we should change it for all. I don't think we heard everything that you were going to say, Susan, because you were, you're, for some reason, the sound cut out at some point and you froze. I have, we're living in difficult times. I admit full well, I'm also always wary of setting precedent, and if we give a day for someone here, what will happen the next time somebody applies a day or too late for whatever reason? So I'm just putting that out there for discussion.
I would agree that V has brought so much to our commission that I've enjoyed her energy, her desire to really ensure that she's intentional about looking into, taking time to look at the material and to consider recommendations to council, which she's done very graciously at times. I do believe that in this particular situation, in my personal opinion, it is not wise for us to make this exception, although that does not in any way mean that she's not awesome and amazing. And unfortunate that it did come in late. Okay, so.
For the two males, I really suggest Charlie and Mohamed Nasser.
I agree on those two also. Charlie's been a very committed member of the committee, and I actually talked to him, and I had concerns since he's just been appointed to the school board, but he said that he's found that there is enough time to attend to work on both of these bodies. So I would definitely recommend him. And Nasser Mohamed sounded very passionate about his experience and why he would like to be on this. So, yeah, for the two males, I would suggest Charlie and Nasser.
Well, I would suggest Zach and Kyle, and I'll give you my reasons. We have a lot of people who are very interested and very capable. And with, for example, with Charlie, he served two terms on Human Rights Commission. This would be his second term on HCDC. And so we, I mean, one of the things that we've talked about over the last few years is really giving a lot of different people the opportunity to serve. And so when you let one person serve two terms on one commission and then go to another commission and serve two terms, they're taking up a lot of spots and preventing a lot of other people being involved, regardless of how good they are or not. And one of the things I really liked about Kyle, too, is he's got a lot of experience with Iowa City Housing Authority, working with people with housing choice vouchers. And Zach had, I think, a lot of good experiences, too. So my preference was with, for Kyle Vogel and Zach Boetia, I'm not sure how to pronounce his last name.
We are looking at also, besides the two male, one nun, non, and I liked what Zach had to say about why he would like to be. He was homeless at one time and has that experience. And so I think, and he apparently was on HCDC at one time until like last year or something. So I think he would do well.
Zach has been on Historic Preservation.
Oh, sorry. That's what it was.
Yeah. I saw many people being in some commission, and I think it is fair, if we give other people the second term, it is fair also to give Charlie a second term as well. And Mohamed, we always say that Iowa City encourage diversity in the appointment of the citizen to the board and the commission. Then we need diversity. Mohamed Nasser is the one who will sit for diversity.
For other, I'm going to put in a plug for Teresa Lewis, who is president of Four Oaks. They work up in Cedar Rapids. They're not, the work, the actual work that she does on housing is not within Johnson County or Iowa City, so I don't believe that she would have a conflict with respect to needing to come to city council for funding. But she has a lot of experience dealing with these sorts, dealing with these sorts of issues, and I think she could be a very valuable member.
I agree with Janice about Teresa. With her experience, she would be a good set for this committee also.
Yeah, I also appreciated Teresa's background and experience. And I tried to speak with all of the applicants. And, you know, I thought also Kyle Vogel's experience with the Housing Authority and just bringing up a really different perspective, you know, based on his experience. And Nasser Mohamed also seemed like someone who was very interested and had a pretty compelling background. And, yeah, I guess I already said Teresa Lewis, didn't I?
Yes, you said. I also support Teresa, but I really want to tell you that on this commission, you have only two people of color. And if we add Mohamed Nasser, who will be the second one, and Teresa and Charlie, those three.
I think we already have two on there. There's one from Argentina and one from the Congo. So I think there's already two people of color on the commission.
That's what I said. Two, only two people.
Okay, misunderstood, sorry.
Yeah.
I'll throw my hat for Charlie, Teresa, and Mohamed.
All right, so it is down to, I'll tell you where, well, maybe I'll give my votes for now. So it is down to really three people, in my opinion, no matter what I do, in a way. So it is down to Teresa Lewis, Nassar Mohamed, and Charlie Isam.
So you're supporting Charlie, then?
There is, right now, it's four for Teresa, four for Mohamed, Nassar Mohamed, and three for Charlie. I personally believe that my, I'll tell you who I came here to, who I was supporting, and I've heard feedback. So Teresa Lewis, I really enjoyed what she had to bring. Nassar Mohamed, definitely wanted him on there, and I'm happy to see the support. And then for Kyle Vogel, I saw that, one, it'd be his first time being on the commission. He's doing housing and really, I think he would benefit this committee greatly. And so that's why I thought he would, Kyle will be good on this commission. I don't know if anyone has any, I mean, that was my choice. So then Kyle and Charlie, according to what I've heard so far, are tied.
In the interest of giving new people a shot at this, I would agree with what you proposed, Mayor.
So you're talking, Teresa Lewis clearly has majority support.
Yes.
And it sounds like Nasser Mohamed does. I'm not clear on who the third one really has the majority support.
Yep. So it's tied between Kyle Vogel and Charlie Isam.
Well, I would just say, I would go with Kyle. We talked over and over and over about giving new people an opportunity to participate in our commissions. And like I said, this would be at least the fourth time that Charlie's been on one of the commissions, plus he's serving on the school board. So he has an awful lot of opportunity to participate in and impact things in the community. And so this would be a way to open it up for somebody new. And this is something that this council has talked a lot about, is giving more people opportunity. I think that's important.
We just give, Susan, we just give Kevin, we give Austin, we give Oliver, we give all those beers second time. Why Charlie?
We haven't all the time. We have not all the time. Even the last few months, we've had some that we did not reappoint for second terms. It's depended on who else was there. And I would say that this is a very unique one in that he has served at least two terms on human rights. This will be a second term here, so it's not just reappointing for a second term. It's just a long-term history of being on one commission and another. And I think it's important to open up opportunities for other people.
Other people being in the commission as well. I guess it's fair enough to do that. If we, yes, on the last three, the last two appointed commission, we reappointed people who've been there. And I think it's fair to do the same thing with Charlie this time.
Well, when we get to P and Z, I'm going to tell you, I don't want to reappoint both of those. So it's, I don't believe in doing it every time.
And Mayor, I think I did count four people favorable for Kyle Vogel, if that was myself, Councillor Weiner, yourself, and Councillor Mims. And I spoke with Charlie, as I indicated, tried to speak with everyone. And as I said to him, you know, one reason where I feel like it may be good to let someone else have another opportunity is that Charlie will continue to do an excellent job advocating for things that he believes in, regardless of where he is, you know, seated on a commission or, you know, I mean, he's an accomplished community activist. And so I think giving someone else a voice at this particular table makes sense to me.
I think I spoke to him, too, but he said even, it is time maybe for people of color to stay. And there is many people, another person of color, if we want to give people chance, we can avoid another person. Because he said, I would love to be there, but if the opportunity will be for people of color, why not? It's time for people of color to stay. I think if you want to avoid, just avoid with Fahq Mohamed. She's been applying many, many, many times for many, many applications, and we did not appointed her. Her name come many, many times. And I think that if we really want to give a people chance, new people and diversity people, we should give it to Mohamed Nasser, Anu Fahq Mohamed, if that the case.
We're also going to run into challenges there with having two males and one other.
No, what do you mean? This is female and two male, two male and.
What I will say as of now, as far as the numbers, the majority does have for Teresa, Kyle, and Nassar Mohamed. And so maybe we can agree with the majority on that, and then we can go to the next item, if we are in agreement.
Yeah, go ahead.
We're going to go to item number 4E, Planning and Zoning Commission. There are two vacancies to fill, a five-year term, July 1st through, 2020 through June 30th, 2025.
Well, I'll start. My preference was to reappoint Max Parsons and to appoint Susan Craig. And I know this is a, this is always a tough one because the learning curve on P and Z is large. But I think when we have two openings come up, and if you reappoint both people, again, you end up in that situation of not getting, you know, turnover and getting more people to have an opportunity to serve. And I know Susan had expressed to me her real interest when she retired from the city, from the library, of being involved and particularly being on P and Z. And the reason I would choose Susan is I think she'd be very good. I think she'd be very objective and very, very thoughtful in the process. I have no preconceived notion of how she would vote on anything, but I just think she would be very objective and very thoughtful. And the concern with the others, both Adam and Kimberly are Realtors, and we already have two Realtors on P and Z, and I don't think we should add anymore. So that's my rationale.
I'm supportive of Susan Craig and Michael Hinch. I think Susan, first of all, the appointment on the P and Z is for five years, so that's a long appointment. It's one of the more challenging commissions to work on because of the subject matter, but I think Susan has had, expressed to me, a long-time interest in planning and zoning matters. And I think she would serve very well on this commission. So I landed on Susan and Michael.
I agree with Thomas, too. Susan and Michael would be great.
Well, this is tough because, I mean, how do you separate the reappointments, Michael Hinch versus Max Parsons? They've both been very good members of that committee with their attendance, as I said before. I always look at that. I was definitely going to support Max Parsons. I was very pleased to see Susan's application for this, and I would go with her if we're going with a second person besides reappointing Michael.
I also would like to see Susan Craig on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think, you know, I can, in a very smaller time scale, she had so much experience, but I went from being a city employee and then serving on the Iowa City Telecommunications Commission. And I do think having that background, you know, on staff and then being able to serve on a commission for someone who has that public servant heart that she obviously does, I think that would be really, really excellent. I don't have strong feelings about the second position, though.
I support Susan Craig. I was really impressed with the application, and I'm agnostic on the second one.
Who did you say for the second one?
I said I'm agnostic on the second one. I don't have a strong preference one way or the other.
Okay. Well, I am supporting Susan Craig and Michael Hinch, which Susan Craig would then have six supports and Michael with three. I may have missed one person on him. Otherwise, I think we have our selection for all of our commissions. So great job at navigating. And what I think at this time, could I get a motion to appoint for the commissions as we, the individuals that we've stated for appointment?
Moved by Sally.
Second by Mims. Second by Mims.
All right, roll call, please.
Burgis?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Keeg?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 15, Announcement of Vacancies New. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Public Art Advisory Committee, two vacancies to fill a three-year term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, June 23rd, 2020. And item number 16, Announcement of Vacancies Previous. Airport, Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Telecommunications Commission, two vacancies to fill a three-year term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. And we are on to item number, item number 17. And that is UISG Ryan.
Hi, everyone. No major updates for right now. Last week was finals week, and students now have a few weeks to decide if they want to choose regular grading or pass, no pass grading. That is something that the university offered this year due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And I just wanted to say congrats to all the graduating seniors. And we're really proud of all the accomplishments that you've brought to Iowa City and to the university. And we wish you luck as you go forward and hope that, wish you well in all your future endeavors. So that's all that I have for me.
Great. Well, thank you. And we're very proud of all the graduating seniors or graduates from the University of Iowa. This is definitely a different time that they're living in. And so to all the graduates, thanks for being a part of our community. We really appreciated it. And yeah, I wish you all the best in whatever your future endeavors are. All right, moving on to item number 18, which is City Council Information and Updates. So we've done really well at chiming in. Earlier today, we were kind of talking over each other. But overall, throughout the Zoom process, we've done well. So just chime in whenever you want to.
Well, we had an executive committee meeting today for the access center. No, actually, yesterday. These days do run together. And just talking about some of the billing issues as they go forward, I would say what I find interesting in these meetings is, you know, the opening, while being pushed off a little bit to January, we certainly are getting closer and closer. And you can tell that by the kind of detail that is going into some of these meetings. So that's a positive. I'll just give a really quick update of the Zoom meeting that Jeff and I were involved in last Friday, that my first one, the Better Together Project. For me, the most important thing coming out of that is that the group has hired Mark Nolte to kind of be the project director of that for the next year. I think everybody knows Mark's long history in Iowa City with ICAD. And he just, he knows this community so well and is just incredibly passionate about everything to do with this community and making us grow and prosper and certainly recover and heal from this pandemic. So that's really exciting. As Jeff mentioned earlier, there's no, there's no big plans or projects. It's at this point, it's more coming together with ideas. If any of you have ideas, please funnel those to Jeff or myself to take forward. But it's more about that coordination and communication and figuring out how we can help each other from county to cities to the university, to the hospitals, et cetera, to make sure that we come through this in the best way possible and recover and are just as vibrant as we can be. And I think Mark Nolte put it really well. He said, I hope that we can find ourselves maybe in a year with, you know, an article in one of the the national newspapers, like The Washington Post, or I guess maybe he said The Wall Street Journal and The New York Times, because then he joked about depending on your political persuasion. But it just, you know, an article of just what a great job this small Midwestern metropolitan area had done in not just surviving, but recovering from this pandemic. And so really trying to be creative and thoughtful and sensitive to the needs of our community, whether it's individuals or businesses. So I think it's going to be a really interesting process and really want to work together and cooperate to make it as easy a recovery as we possibly can for everybody. So give us your ideas. We'll take them forward.
I don't have anything, but I would like just to say Friday is the last day of Ramadan. Thanks God, we're not going to be fasting anymore. And Saturday will be the first day of breaking the fast. I know that Eid is meant to, for, you know, people together, together and celebrate together. But I really urge all the Muslim in the community to celebrate Eid with their family at home. Please make a big meal to break the fast and do like some cookies and everything, but then go and engage with people outside. Yes, also still stay home and celebrate with your family. Thank you. And happy Eid for all the Muslim in the community.
So several, several of us, including the mayor and Councilor Burgis and I, were on a call, one of the calls with the VA hospital staff about last week, thanking them for all the hard work they've been doing during this. I thought it was a very, it was a really well organized and was astounded at the number of people on the call. I don't think I've been on a Zoom call that had 300 people on it or over 300 people on it before. I would like to wish the very best to all the graduating classes, including from all our high schools in town, who are experiencing a very different form of graduation, a different, and senior year and end of senior year than they would ever have imagined. And best of luck moving forward. And you'll have until Friday to request an absentee ballot for the June 2nd primary.
I don't have any committee reports, just some community things. Last Friday, of course, was the summer shop crawl that I had talked about meeting before. Of course, it was done virtually, which was a new experience, an interesting way to do it. I hope the shops did well. I did manage to purchase some things online, which was interesting. But I certainly hope we can do a face-to-face one again sometime soon. The other one I wanted to talk about, John mentioned neighborhood commercial and the importance of that. And I was so excited to see, I've heard a lot, I don't think it's opened yet, but very soon, on the corner of Muscatine and Court Market, and I am going to mispronounce this, I'm not sure if it's Thomas or Tomas or Thomas, a market, a meat and market used to be a neighborhood market many years ago. And they have redesigned it, and they're going to reopen very soon. So that's exciting. And the neighbors are all very excited about that. So congratulations to them and welcome back to the community.
My only committee update was the UNESCO City of Literature Board of Directors met last week. And like many organizations, they're facing some budgetary challenges as some of their private funding has been redirected to other sources or, you know, individuals and other sponsors might be having a challenging time meeting those obligations at the same level that they had in the past. And of course, programming, having to go online and the IC, Music IC Festival did not happening in person. And just looking forward to the book festival in the fall and thinking about what that might look like and just the staff trying to make plans for what used to be important in-person events just happening maybe in other ways. I did also want to say congratulations to all of the graduating classes, seniors in high school, as Janice mentioned, as well as the University of Iowa and all of our colleges. And congratulations, I think next week is the end of the school year. So for those who have students who are doing any kind of learning at home and in this environment, maybe that will be a relief to, to have that behind us soon as well. That's it. Thanks.
I'll just remind everyone again about that, that's coming Friday on the 22nd, from 1:30 to 3:00 PM, the Solar Sighting webinar, sponsored by the UNI Center for Energy and Environmental Education. So I would guess that that's how you can join the webinar, is by looking that up on UNI's website. So I'm interested in seeing what that might have to offer instead.
Well, great. So I have been very busy, and I won't go into everything. One, I wanted to take a moment to say thanks to all of our city staff that's been a part of the eight, the morning EOC meetings. While the city, while the state is opening up and also our city is opening up, I want you to just know that our leadership team here is really paying close attention to that and doing some things within our power to ensure safety. And so just wanted to, again, give a shout out to Chief Greer, who is kind of leading that effort, and all of the participant, all of the participants that are there present, doing a great job. And then I continue to attend, when possible, the Johnson County Public Health EOC, which happens now Monday, Wednesday, Fridays. I've been a part of lots of Zoom meetings with people in the community. Actually, it's been an uptick of involvement, which I've really enjoyed. And this one I wanted to mention was with Oakdale Community, Community, Oakdale Community Choir. So that was on this past Friday. And I can tell you that that was so powerful, just connecting with the choir. Now, the inside singers, as they're called, the individuals that live within the prison, was not able to be a part. But typically, they would be having a concert this time of year, where there's people from outside in the community that is a part of a choir, and they go routinely for rehearsals to Oakdale Prison and sing with inside singers. And so it was still such a fabulous event, very meaningful. And so wanted to just mention that today. And so thanks to Dr. Cohen, who leads that, she's phenomenal. She was just great. And so it was, it was a great experience. Other than that, that is the only update that I would give for today. I'm going to move over to our item number 19. Is there someone else? Oh, sorry. All right, item number 19, City Manager, would you like to say something to us?
Nothing new tonight.
All right. What about Assistant City Manager?
I'll remind everyone, it's not too late to take your census, my2020census.gov. And we've got some interesting ideas percolating to continue planning for our climate festival this fall. So variety of activities taking different formats. So plans are coming. I'm getting excited about it. So that's all I'll share tonight. Thanks.
All right. And I will give direction to our city attorney to turn on your mic.
It's on, it's on. It's on. I was, I was ready for you. Nothing from me.
Great. And then our city clerk?
Yes, I just want to say congrats to all the seniors in the school district, but especially the ones at Liberty and West High, since I have one at each. So.
Yes, yes. I hear that they're having a graduation, right?
They are, a walk-through.
A walk-through, yeah.
I have a niece there, that's why, no.
My daughter is graduated as well, yeah.
Yes, yes. All right, we're at item number 20. Unless someone has anything for the good or the cause, could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I don't know who did it, so I'm just going to say, moved by Taylor and seconded by, I saw Weiner. So, all right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, nobody opposed, huh? All right.
Your Zoom tip for the evening is if you need to unmute, if you need to unmute briefly, if you touch your spacebar, it will unmute you.
Oh, really? Wow, that's nice.
Great.
But that's what, I mute the camera as well, right?
No, it won't.
Because look at this. It took out my camera.
That's weird. Mine, mine just, usually mostly it just unmutes your, your sound.
Sound, right.
You must have a, you must have a very talented.
Okay, thank you for this feedback. Thanks.
All right, have a good night.
So long, everybody.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.